Good evening and welcome. To the Ashkosh School District Board of Education meeting on Wednesday, March 26th, 2014, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Please call the board.
Here.
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 Here. All right. First off, we have the Pledge of Allegiance and this evening will be led by some Carl Traeger middle school students, LA leader Gabrielle Gautier and Ashley Wissing. Please rise and follow them in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My daughter.
My son, he's at home.
All right. Next on the agenda, we actually have a presentation of elementary school art awards. And I guess I'll ask for your assistance if you would come up and present yourself. I will distribute the certificates as their names are called.
From Carl, well, we're dealing with a different order here than is on the list, so we'll go off the screen.
I'm in the same order.
Yes, yes, the list on the agenda is not. Okay. Trinity Fennell from Oakwood Elementary. Congratulations. There you go.
That's scary here.
Emily Kaiser.
Emily, are you here?
Mm-hmm. From Oakwood Elementary School. Asha Bang.
Congratulations. Anthony Dunn. Congratulations.
Jada Basely.
Jada, anyone?
Avery DeMell.
Congratulations.
Ryan McDonald.
Congratulations.
Olivia Martin.
Congratulations.
Madeline Mellett. Lindsay Hinderman.
Congratulations.
Sarah Bazan.
Congratulations. Your first is actually hanging right over there.
Right.
The original.
The original. Asha Abraham. Making her way.
Oh, yes. Congratulations.
Jeremiah Houseworth.
Jeremiah?
No. Elsie Binisch.
Congratulations.
Anna Qualman.
Anna?
Anna?
Yeah.
No. Ethan Clem.
Congratulations.
Avery Johnson.
Avery?
No. Celeste Fritz.
Celeste?
No. Antoni Loer.
Yeah.
Stefan Stoljulovic?
Vic? Stoljulovic?
Stefan?
No, Stefan. Megan Bruce?
Megan?
Megan Bruce?
Do you not have a certificate? We will have to get your certificate. Do you have much longer of it?
No, I've been working from the screen, so.
Congratulations.
We're going to get you a certificate.
Give her five bucks, Mac, give her five bucks.
Congratulations.
Right? Thank you.
From Roosevelt.
Again, congratulations, and we will tell you that you are not required to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're certainly welcome to, but it can be rather lengthy and boring, so.
More sure and exciting.
As I said, you're more than welcome to stay if you wish.
All right. Next on our list this evening is board administrative reports. From the president, I only have two items, and they're both actually for the board themselves. One is that you will see a pink sheet before you tonight. Please fill it out for Sheri before you leave. And the other one is our board self-evaluation. You will see your self-evaluation in your packet. Please make sure you fill that out and bring it in to our next meeting.
That's it for the president. Superintendent's report.
Yes. Mr. Mack? Yes, the superintendent's report for this evening. Number of issues that we've had experience with. The Read Across America guest readers. I think we're going to have the screen move if we possibly can. Okay. The Read Across guest readers from the community came and shared some of their favorite books with us at school, at Green Meadow Elementary School. As a part of the celebration of reading, we ask a reading commitment from students that evening at home. We encourage entire families to say no, Siri to the TV and snuggle in bed with some great books instead. All of that put together by the literacy resource teacher Lisa Karns. Heading for state level competition, Ashkosh North for the third year in a row will be heading to the state level competition for the Finance and Investment Challenge on March 12th. They competed at Fox Valley Technical College in Appleton, and one of their teams placed second. Congratulations to the North Finance team. The 2014 Passport for Success was a successful partnership for the Ashkosh Chamber, Lurds Academy, and OASD. Together with approximately 1,000 eighth graders, were able to meet with 80-plus area professionals in the key Wisconsin career clusters. Students carried passports to take them to the firsthand learning for education paths and workplace requirements necessary to be successful in post-graduation. Julie Mosher addressed the community volunteers who attended with a presentation on district-wide initiatives to provide high school students with a workplace. A special salute to Project West students who served on the day. Mrs. Langroff and OW Ashkosh West High School culinary students who prepared the food. Lurds Academy and Northwestern Mutual for sponsoring the event. Middle school counselors for their student preparation, and especially Patty Anderson Shrew for coordinating recruiting all the community members and professionals who took time to contribute and for the experience of learning. I had a chance to visit that event, and it was just simply marvelous for eighth-grade students. And first team, 28-26 Wave Robotics hit the ground running. On January 4th, the kickoff meeting for the 2014 aerial assist was unveiled, proving it requires strong teamwork to make it to the top. The team had its first opportunity to earn a spot at the World Championship in St. Louis on March 6th through 8th, and the Northern Lights Regional in Duluth, Minnesota, as well. Of the 55 teams that competed, Wave Robotics earned a third seed position. They joined forces with the second seed and other teams to form alliance and finished at the regional finalists in second place in the robotic competition. They also won the Imaginary Award, which celebrates machines' robustness in concept and fabrication, attractiveness in engineering, and outstanding visual aesthetic integration of machine and team appearance. They scored the highest ever for the Chairman's Award with the most prestigious award at first, which honors the team, represents the best model, and other teams to emulate the best in bodies and purpose first. Making history were Melissa Daniels, Ashkosh West High School junior, who was selected to represent the region in First Dean's List Award. Melissa's efforts to share her passion for STEM and service to the community are exemplary, and she will be going to compete to become one of the 10 Dean's List finalists to be named at the World Championship in St. Louis. The first team, 28-26 Wave Robotics, is very grateful for all the support mentors thank, sponsors, schools, and community as they work through the culture, change culture, and make a splash in the world. Thank you so much for the continued support of their program, and a number of us were able to visit them at their open house display as well earlier last month. Reed School raises some $10,744.79 for leukemia and the lymphoma, for lymphoma society through their years for pennies, patients fundraising drive. Students brought in their spare change to help kids in Wisconsin who are battling blood cancers. Among other things, they participated in a special dress-up day and a read-a-thon, ate lunch with their teachers to raise money. In celebration of their hard work, students earned the opportunity to see their teachers teach on wheels for the day, and many students participated in a lock-in. Students made an effort, made an ice cream sundae on Mr. Gafford's Reed Fire teacher and Mr. Rogers Reed principal, and got a perm. They also had a family night and silent auction, thanks to the nations of hundreds of local businesses. Most importantly, the students had a lot of fun, and they learned that they can make a difference in the community. And it appears that everybody survived until Saturday morning after that event. We've had a discussion about making it all the way through the night at Reed School. Tipler and Merrill students represented Ashkosh in Madison at the State Capitol on Friday, March 14th. Students from around Wisconsin were invited to Madison to represent school districts' efforts in the world of STEM and Project Lead the Way. There were a total of 11 districts selected to set up the display. All the districts except Ashkosh brought high school students. Tipler and Merrill middle school students represented Ashkosh well by bringing very nice items for the display and interacting with the visitors at the tables. Students from Tipler were Katrina Baker, Ryan Kuski, Alex Nemasek. Making a virtual appearance through Skype was Caliga Gomez. Caliga, by the way, gets carsick, and she joined her friends by video during the entire event, so using technology to the most. The students had opportunity to impress several high school students and teachers from around the state, as well as some of the staffers from the congressional offices, the administrator of the MSOE representatives, the PLTW, and Bemis. Also on hand were a couple of administrators from Ashkosh, including Merrill principal Cindy Olson, myself, and a big thank you for joining them for the day. It was quite a positive experience to see those students demonstrate, especially to high school students, since all the other school districts were represented by older students at the event. Little to give, a lot to receive. The Technology and Engineering Class at South Park Middle School under the direction of Jason Jacecki, participating in Penn State Industrial Freedom Project, Industries Freedom Project. The Penn Freedom Project is a combined effort between Penn State Industries and South Park Middle School. Penn State Industries donated the supplies for 10 pens, and South Park students will create the pens by turning them into woodlath, assembling them, and sending them overseas to our troops. As a token of thanks for their effort and keeping our country safe, Channel 5 came to videotape the students in action, and it will be broadcast in the production on March 26th at 4:30 and 6:30 p.m. This is a little to give, to receive a lot in return. Thank you for those from the South Park Technology and Engineering Department. Reed Elementary also was busy with celebrating Reed Across America, although all throughout the week of March 3rd, Reed Elementary hosted a variety of guests who came to Reed to students. The guests also shared with students why reading is important. A very special thank you to all the guests. Steve Dito, Kelly Saginick, Dave Albrecht, Gordon Hints, Scoopy, John Holland, Officer Pettit, Pam Ruder, Ms. Olson, Mary Jukum, Apple Blossoms Books, Axel Tech, UW Ashkosh students, Ashkosh North students, and the wonderful Reed families for sharing their love for reading. Ashkosh West swimming updates. The Ashkosh West seniors have been selected for, the following Ashkosh West seniors have been selected for the 2013-14 Wisconsin Interscholastic Coaches Academic All-State Team. They include Carter Crowley, Adam Long, Zach Walker, Allison Pansky, Becky Prochnow, Aleish Sassy, and Haley Wald. The 2013-14 Boys Varsity Team and Diving Team received the Silver Scholar Awards for a combined team GPA of 3.568 with 17 letter winners. The 2013 Varsity Swim and Diving Team received the Silver Scholar Award for a combined GPA of 3.536 with 27 letter winners. And Ashkosh West senior, Adam Tushner, received All-State mention in the 50 and 100 free for the 2013-2014 season. The Herb Cole Award were awarded on Saturday, March 22nd. The 2014 Herb Cole Education Foundation Scholarship and Fellowship Program recipients from Ashkosh Area School District were recognized this past Saturday, March 22nd, at a reception held in a ceremony in Wapaka, attended by retired Senator Herb Cole. Congratulations to Ashkosh West student Daphne Thompson, English teacher Trent Scott, and Webster Elementary teacher Kelsey Gruther, who received awards during the ceremony. Daphne received the Cole Scholarship, and Trent and Kelsey received Cole Fellowship awards in the amount of $1,000 each. Both Webster Elementary and Ashkosh High School Foundation will receive $1,000 each from the Cole Foundation, so another significant event of honoring our students and staff. And Carl Traeger Middle School receives the Purple Paw Award. CTMS had a challenge from March 10th through the 13th to see which home base could raise the most items and to donate to the Ashkosh Area Humane Society. The home base winners were chosen to play, to win it relay games and beat the Winter Blues Assembly, held on Friday, March 14th. Pictured are Angel Thiel, Jordan Dietering, and Zach Pascarella, who participated in the activity. Family Craft Day at Peace Christian and Preschool and 4K. Each month, 4K classes at Peace 4K, led by Rihanna Kinderman and assisted by Rebecca Hayes, host a Family Craft Day, bringing families to the classroom and giving them a day to prove, that has proven to be, give parents perspective about their child's classroom and teachers, give the students an opportunity to show off their classroom to their school family, and provide organizational activities for parents to participate with their children. Another outstanding parent involvement event in the district. And lastly, we have the complete list of events in the last two weeks that the superintendent has participated in, as our calendar has been extremely full.
All right. Thank you. Next on the agenda is other reports. Are there others this evening who have reports?
Okay, I'll start. Facilities and Finance Committee met on March 20th. We talked about the budget, and we didn't actually get an update. Sue was out of town, so she just sent a paper copy. There were no questions, and we're going to, the only variance that we're concerned about is our utilities, because it was such a cold winter. We're worried that we might be out of budget on that one, but we'll find out pretty soon if it ever warms up. We were given an update on Oakland's spending. Right now, we have an outstanding invoice for about $96,000 from the city. We're not exactly sure what all is covered in that invoice, so Sushnor is going to go back. It has something to do with the top sale and how we had to haul it off and where it was hauled and who paid for the hauling and all of that. So she's going to take care of that and find out what all is still owed to the city. But even taking that into consideration, there's still over $250,000 remaining. So we're asking teachers for their needs, and Randy Johnston did some lighting upgrades for about $3,500 bucks. There's some other talk of maybe automating those. Mr. Lyson had commented that he's had requests for community members that might want to donate items to the district, and so we're going to come back at the next Finance and Facilities meeting and try and set something up that's kind of formal if you want to, you know, give away your tuba. We'll figure out a way to make that happen. And the last thing that we discussed is Al Wenig presented the lease agreement between the Ashkosh Area School District and the Winnebago County for the county park softball diamonds. Really no big changes. We had some ADA things that had to be included, and we talked about concessions that were changed. But essentially, this agreement is good through 2018, and there's no change in price. Our next meeting will be April 17th at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you. Yes, and obviously, we'll be voting on that contract this evening.
Tonight, yeah.
Other reports? Kelly?
The Education Committee met on Thursday, March 20th at 10:00. It was not a public forum, but Julie gave us quick updates on Communities and the Academy for Global Studies. Communities at Ashkosh North, a program within a school. We need to make sure that people are aware that it's not a charter. It's near completion of its second year. Community 1 has openings for the next school year for 80 freshmen and sophomore students, and to date, over 120 applications have been received. Communities 2 currently has 54 applications, so they seem to be doing very well, and there's quite a draw there. There'll be some curricular changes in the upcoming year, just to make sure that the program's meeting benchmarks. Data from the previous year suggests that they just need to do some moving around with some of the courses and some of the topics to make sure they do that. Because Communities has done so well, they're looking at replicating that success at West by starting an Academy for Global Studies in the fall. There's additional information that you can get from the website on that, and that's going to involve like world culture, Spanish 2, English honors, and that would be, Ashkosh West would be one of five schools in the state approved to offer this global achievement certificate, which would be presented to the students at graduation who complete the requirements. Curriculum could also maybe include some travel abroad in the future. That'd be great, right? The Education Committee expressed some concerns about the lack of STEM programs and how can we kind of reignite those, get those going, you know, in some of our schools that already have some initiatives kind of in there, and we looked at, so that led into the next topic was the development of a framework and guidelines for creation of magnet schools, schools of choice that align with Goals 5E and G and the strategic plan. And so the committee was interested in looking at, you know, how can we feed STEM into the middle schools, kind of get it going in there? How can we reignite the Environmental Charter School at Oakwood? Since it is a charter, is there some way that we can do some things there to really beef that up and get that going? Get something into the middle schools, give parents choices which allow kids the opportunity to do some different things in their schools? Let's see, what else do you want to know? Yeah, I think that's probably the bulk of those meetings. Area of concern being addressed currently is working with parents of students at an early age to make decisions in terms of career and college readiness. That's being heavily moved into the curricular experience for kids. And working on those post-secondary education requirements earlier. It's not always picking a career, but it's a lot around decision-making, career planning, problem-solving, and so we're trying to look at innovative ways to do that. And the next meeting is April 17th at 10:00.
Thank you. We were presenting information with studies in some of your packet, right? I mean, I think I read all about that.
Yes, it was our last word packet.
All right. Other reports? Steve?
Policy and Governance met on March 18th at 10:00 a.m. On our agenda tonight, a consent agenda is Policy 889, which is a new policy. It deals with partnerships, which is way more inclusive than what we had had in the past. It deals essentially with school, family, business, and community partnerships, all within one policy, instead of having these all separated into four. It was well-written, this has been moved onto our agenda this evening for a vote. We had a discussion about Policy 361, is the use of video and movies in the classroom. We also had a somewhat lengthy discussion about Education Media Group. Basically, this is a company that comes in and has sponsorships which are placed within our buildings, opening up a revenue stream. There was a lengthy discussion. We are certainly moving forward with this, but very cautiously. None of us, I'm sure, want to see like Coca-Cola banners or something like that flying around on our lockers. They do have a student design program, which intrigued me, although there is a limited amount that you would be able to do that with. The superintendent ultimately would have the right to reject, refuse the banners. It was decided that any monetary amounts that were generated would go directly to our Education Foundation, so that it would be equally dispersed for additional opportunities for the kids, instead of like having it go to one school or one classroom, wherever that the advertisement might be, the sponsorships might be put up. Right now, we're having, our next step is that Stan is going to be checking on some representatives and some references from area school districts that are employing this strategy, which are like Hartford and Bon Lac westbound. He's going to bring us back some information on that and find out essentially what this all deals with. Essentially, what it is, is a four-by-eight banner that is put up, it's like a soft scrim banner, and put up with, I believe that the advertisement is supposed to be 10% of the picture, so in other words, it'll say like "Education first," and then in the bottom it'll have something like "Affinity Healthcare" or something like that. And so I certainly went in there somewhat skeptical, but I came out not saying completely sold, but I felt better about what I saw happening there. Anyway, Stan will get back to us on this with what he finds out from some of these districts that are using that. I believe that the banners would generate roughly $1,200 a year per banner, so if we were to put that into our educational foundation, certainly that would be something, it's not something we can use for our regular fund budget, but it could be something to help to fund global studies and maybe send some people to like. We also discussed our WASB update. We had, last year, we received a number of recommendations from WASB to revise some of our policies. Currently, we are at 72%.
On our agenda tonight, a consent agenda is Policy 889, which is a new policy. It deals with partnerships, which is way more inclusive than what we had had in the past. It deals essentially with school, family, business, and community partnerships, all within one policy instead of having these all separated into four. It was well-written. This has been moved onto our agenda this evening for a vote. We had a discussion about Policy 361 is the use of video and movies in the classroom. We also had a somewhat lengthy discussion about Education Media Group. Basically, this is a company that comes in and has sponsorships which are placed within our buildings, opening up a revenue stream. There was a lengthy discussion. We are certainly moving forward with this, but very, very cautiously. None of us, I'm sure, wants to see like Coca-Cola banners or something like that flying around on our lockers. They do have a student design program, which intrigued me, although there is a limited amount that you would be able to do that with. The superintendent ultimately would have the right to reject, refuse the banners. It was decided that any monetary amounts that were generated would go directly to our education foundation so that it would be equally dispersed for additional opportunities for the kids instead of like having it go to one school or one classroom, wherever that the advertisement might be, the sponsorships might be put up. Right now, we're having, our next step is that Stan is going to be checking on some representatives and some references from area school districts that are employ this strategy, which are like Hartford and Bon Lac, westbound. He's going to bring us back some information on that and find out essentially what this all deals with. Essentially what it is, is a four-by-eight banner that is put up. It's like a soft scrim banner and put up with, I believe that the advertisement is supposed to be 10% of the picture. So in other words, it'll say like "Education first" and then in the bottom, it'll have something like "Affinity Healthcare" or something like that. And so I certainly went in there somewhat skeptical, but I came out not saying completely sold, but I felt better about what I saw happening there. Anyway, Stan will get back to us on this with what he finds out from some of these districts that are using that. I believe that the banners would generate roughly $1,200 a year per banner. So if we were to put that into our educational foundation, certainly that would be something. It's not something we can use for our regular fund budget, but it could be something to help to fund global studies and maybe send some people to like. We also discussed our WASB update. We had, last year, we received a number of recommendations from WASB to revise some of our policies. Currently, we are at 72% completion on the mandated items, which is 23 out of 32. There are still 13 critical items on there which we're moving forward with and we hope to have this wrapped up. Well, we're moving 23 out of 32. We're certainly not setting on our hands on this. We're moving forward with it, so hopefully we'll be wrapping those up in the next few months as well. I guess that's it for Policy and Governance.
All right, thank you, Steve. Anything else from other committees? All right, seeing none, we will go on to non-agenda related public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? If so, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, although I think we probably know it. Good evening.
My name is Karen Bowen and I live at 703 East Irving Avenue. As a member of past boards that contributed to the problems that we now face, by failing to raise enough revenue to lead our district forward for the long term, I'm speaking to you tonight to applaud you for tackling this issue head-on with the referendum on April 1st. Whatever one may think about the way the state of Wisconsin has chosen to finance our schools, we do have the opportunity to take ourselves forward on April 1st because you, the board and administration, had the courage to go forward with this referendum. We can no longer take pride in ranking at the bottom of so many spending categories, but we can take pride in a yes vote on April 1st. So thank you again for breaking with precedent and moving this community forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak tonight on a non-agenda related item? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kim Nguyen. I live at 682 Evans Street. I'm a parent of two boys in the district at Webster Elementary and I am the product of a very good education. I'd like to read some statement here. "I urge the people of Oshkosh to vote yes on April 1st to pass this referendum so urgently needed by our high-performing but critically underfunded schools. The case for voting yes is clear. The health of our community, its vibrance, its economy is tied to the health of our schools. For years, our district has been the lowest-funded of all our neighbors and we have dealt with state funding reductions and increased expenses by cutting $16 million over the last seven years, mostly on the backs of teachers and administrators while trying to preserve, trying to protect our students. We have made the easy cuts. There are no easy cuts left. I served on the school's Budget Reconciliation Committee last year and this year and I saw firsthand the depth and breadth of cuts that we had to make. The really bad cuts that we were able to avoid last year, those are the ones we had to start with this year. This year, the $2.5 million in cuts are real and are necessary. They cannot be avoided unless we vote yes on Tuesday. The referendum asks for $2.5 million to avoid these painful cuts, which will this year directly affect students and will hurt the quality of their education. The referendum also asks for $1.4 million to improve students' access to technology. Why is this access to technology so important? Technology drives the economy of the 21st century. Without our children thriving in a world of technology, they will flounder and the jobs of tomorrow will pass them by. Computer skills are a necessary part of more and more jobs. The knowledge economy is growing while traditional manufacturing is not or is moving offshore. Let's ensure that our schools move with the times and can compete to attract students who have the choice to go elsewhere. Let's vote yes on Tuesday. In the last few years, Oshkosh has been picking up its game with strategic plans and investment in a new water treatment plant, new sewers, new catch basins, new planning standards, new roads, a renewed physical infrastructure. We finally are seeing the light at the end of the tunnel instead of watching neighboring cities pull ahead of us. Investment in physical infrastructure makes sense only if we make a similar investment in our human capital in our schools. Helping young people live up to their potential is an excellent investment. Let's invest in our human capital of tomorrow by voting yes on Tuesday."
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on a non-agenda related public item? A non-agenda related item in the public forum? Please state your name and address for the record.
Julia Salomon, 1320 Snowden Drive. Sorry about the sniffles. I have the never-ending cold like the winter. I'm not originally from Oshkosh, but I now consider it my home after being here for six years. I have moved on the order of 20 times in my lifetime and lived in many different communities, both within the U.S. and also abroad. I've been directly or indirectly involved with various school districts during these experiences, including the school that I attended outside of the U.S. Everyone has an opinion about this referendum, whether for or against it. The reasons to support this referendum are many. We've heard them at presentations, forums, on brochures, leaflets. These include equity for schools in terms of technology, retention of teachers and administrators, support for the arts, sports, et cetera. For me, however, one of the most important reasons why I will support this referendum is her, right there. And it is not necessarily what it will bring to our schools and our children now, but what it means for her future and for all of our kids' future. The future of our kids is not like anything we can imagine. Times have changed and it seems that times are changing quicker than before. Or maybe it's just that that seems that way because I'm growing older. In any case, no one can deny that we now live in a world that is much more connected than ever before. We live in a truly global society where you can reach out and communicate with people from all over the world in less time than it takes to boil a cup of water. We live in a world in which the most popular movie song of today has been translated and sung in 50 different languages, which means that kids in Ecuador, Denmark, Germany, India, and many other countries are singing along to "Let It Go," just like my kid here in Oshkosh is. Whether we have lived in Oshkosh all of our lives or have moved around like I have, one thing is for sure. Our kids will have to live, embrace, and compete in a global society and they will have to deal, survive, and hopefully succeed in a global economy. Our kids are not just competing with other kids in the Oshka School District anymore. They will not just have to compete for college acceptance with other kids in our state. They will not just be competing for scholarships, graduate school, or entry-level jobs with other kids from our country, not anymore. They will be competing with those same kids from Ecuador and Denmark and Germany and India, whether we like it or not. Getting a good education is not good enough anymore. If we settle for just that, we will get just that. And that's not enough, at least not in my opinion. We need a global education, an education that can confidently place her and all of our kids in our schools securely at the top. An education that will expose our kids to cutting-edge technology, science, math, and the arts. There are many things that our schools lack that could be provided with financial support and community support that would help our kids be and stay competitive in this global society. Why would we not want to help our kids to be better poised to tackle the future that lies ahead of them? A future that is more diverse than we ever imagined it? A future that could potentially have them working alongside people from all over the world, not just Oshkosh or Wisconsin? I want my child to confidently be able to compete equally with her peers from Oshkosh, Madison, Berkeley, Istanbul, or Taiwan. The second reason I will be supporting this referendum, and I urge everybody to do so, is because I have seen firsthand how the first wave of cuts has already affected my child directly. I have seen a valuable resource slowly dwindle because of the budget cuts and her ability to seek out that resource gradually disappear. Another reason I will be supporting this referendum is because I have witnessed really good teachers, perhaps our most valuable resource, leave our district to neighboring districts. Shame on us. Who in their right mind would not given, would not leave, given what our neighboring districts are paying, which by the way, is probably the more appropriate pay for our teachers? I have seen directors and administrators leave for that same reason. I'm supporting this referendum for many reasons. For more equity among schools, for more opportunities that will make our children not just get by in school but succeed, for retaining our good teachers, and for many other reasons. In closing, I just want to say that I want my child to succeed because she went to an Oshkosh public school, not despite having attended an Oshkosh public school. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move to the agenda-related public forum. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight on an item that's on tonight's agenda? No, seeing none, we'll move on to tonight's first workshop, which is Referendum Facts Presentation by Gunlock and Schnorr.
We were asked to do a facts presentation that we've been giving throughout the community. And if any of you have ever taught classes before, when you've taught the same class so many times, sometimes you forget what you've said. So we may on occasion miss a point and everybody will chime in and catch it, but we've probably given this presentation a few times and it's gone very, very well. I think you'll find some of the information you've seen, of course, some of it you may not have seen, at least not packaged in this way, but we thought it was important to go ahead and provide that. We are officially on version 4.1 of the referendum presentation. I'm really praying hard that that's the last version, given how close we are to the, but we've added a few, few different components. One thing we wanted to share with you is just some of the presentations that we've given. Now, this is just the first page from January 30th through March 6th, and these are only the large group presentations. These do not include small group presentations. From March 10th through March 31st, we've given a few more. And as you can see, there are very few corners of the community we haven't thankfully been invited to or presented at. So I think it's safe to say we've had a fairly broad message. Typically, this starts with the Oshkosh story and we would echo some of the comments you heard earlier tonight, that we're very proud of what we've done as a school district. You know, we have a community tradition of frankly, doing more with less. And really, this referendum is about not only continuing to do that, but expanding upon that. What is different this time is really the community has gotten behind you as school board members and that started with the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation. They provided some resources for us to survey the entire community, which as you know, identified several community priorities. Those community priorities, you adopted as a Board of Education and then you charged us, the administration, with developing a strategic plan. As we've said in all of our presentations, the strategic plan is a living document. It's also a very powerful document because we revisit it every week. A lot of districts have strategic plans. Some of them are beautifully bound in manuals and some of them sit on shelves and are never looked at again. Ours is looked at weekly and if anybody wants to follow it online, they can see every Monday afternoon, you'll start to see changes occurring to the, to the various tasks and subtasks. So we feel that's a very important piece. It's a very powerful piece that allows us to communicate to the public. Looking forward, our ability to meet our mission and our community's expectations is being compromised by ongoing budget cuts. You know this more than most, but we're at that point now where we have trimmed around the edges as much as we can and the cuts are quite devastating if we're moving forward. We've had a low per student spending since 1992 and that's not necessarily a bad thing. What I think a lot of people forget is that pre-1992, the power rested with you, the school board, to set the actual taxes for the school district. There were no revenue limits. The revenue limits really were yours and you had the authority to do that and it was okay. In fact, it was your responsibility to be very frugal as school boards, historical school boards, because if all of a sudden a roof was going or a boiler was needed in a facility, you had the ability to go ahead and raise the revenue to be able to take care of it. Well, in 1992, that changed and I'm, I guess I shouldn't be, but I'm often surprised at how many community members don't really realize that, that pre-1992, you had that authority and it was then taken away by the state. And that's where revenue limits came in. Since then, the district did tax less than allowed for operations by more than $700,000 a year, in effect lowering the ceiling on ourselves. And that has had an impact on our cost per student, which is about a little over $1,500 below the state average. We've also had a long history of spending reductions. As you heard, $16 million of programs have gone away over the past seven years. And the result of that is that we've eliminated more than 40 teaching positions. We've increased class sizes at all grade levels. We've closed two elementary schools. In almost all measures of spending, we are at or near the bottom. The next part of our story, what we really do is we break it down into three pieces. We take a look at, if we were a business, how would we look at this? We'd look at our revenues that we're bringing in. We look at the spending that we're doing. And then we'd look at our performance. How are we doing on our metrics? So we do the same thing here. If you take a look at our per pupil spending, that's the dollars behind every one of our children, that is $10,808. If you look at our athletic conference, those districts that we play in sports, you'll see that the average is $11,224. If you look at our neighboring districts, it's $11,321. And if you look at our like-size districts, which actually is probably the most appropriate because they're the ones with similar size, demographics, community, and challenges as a 10,000-student school district, their average is $11,860. And lastly, we do put up there the state average, but we really don't look too sharply at that one because it does contain some outlier districts, but we felt it was important to put that up there for completion's sake. The question we continue to get by the community was, well, what if you did? What if we could wave a magic wand and you did tax like those other entities? What would that do? Would that fix the problem or not? Well, if we taxed like the athletic conference, we'd have an additional $4.1 million every year. In a sense, we wouldn't need to go to referendum. If we taxed like our neighbors, it'd be $5.1 million. If we were taxing like our like-size districts, it would be about $10.5 million. And then the state would be just over $19 million a year. The other thing we looked at was mil rate. And by the way, the reason we're at version four of this presentation is every time we present to a community group, we incorporate a lot of their questions into the presentation. This presentation, in my view, is 10 times better than when we first gave it several months ago because of our community's help and support. One thing people wanted to know about is they said, you know, that whole per student thing is fine, but I want to see my mil rate. So what we did is we put the mil rate up there, which is $8.84. If you look at our athletic comparables, you'll see that we are the lowest. One thing that we do point out is last month, the Appleton School District passed a $30 million referendum, which will change their bar on this graph. You'll see that that is $25 million in bond, one-time money, and then $5 million a year ongoing forever. And by the way, that forever money does grow by whatever the revenue limit grows. So that is, that is an ongoing situation for them. So they'll have the ability to make quite a few improvements with that, but that will change their mil rate. They'll be more towards the top of this graph than the bottom of this graph. Now, one of the other questions we had was, well, what's the property value behind our students? Because maybe the property value is just lower here and that's why we're so low. Well, if you look at it, we have $477,000 behind each one of our students in property value. When you look at the rest of the districts, you'll see that yes, Nina and Appleton are slightly higher, but the rest are actually lower when you look at it by athletic conference. The one we really tend to look at more is our neighbors because we are competing for families, just like every other community. And if somebody works here, they're probably going to live within 20 to 30 minutes of Oshkosh and that would be these districts, our neighbors. Once again, we're at 884 and if you look at the rest of the districts, you'll see once again, they're all higher. Now, if we take a look at the property value again, let's take a look at the same metric. And you'll see there's Oshkosh and there's the rest of the districts. Nina and Winnicottany have higher property values, but the rest of the districts have lower property values. Now, what I would take away from this is that we are certainly not poorer in property than these other communities. Lastly, we look at those like-size districts again and you'll see, as we put that in there, you'll see that we are once again near the bottom. But the one I would point out, that we always point out because people ask us about it, is La Crosse. La Crosse has a mil rate of $12.13. We took them out of some initial calculations because that was such an outlier, but they are comparable of ours. And it's also important to know that I believe La Crosse is going for a $25 million referendum when we are. So they're going for additional revenue over, over and above that.
I think what's also important about this demographic, as David said a little earlier, is we don't compare ourselves to more.
is we don't compare ourselves to Milwaukee suburb school districts. When you look at the names of these communities, they are all very similar to us in demographics, free and reduced population size. So it's not like we're comparing ourselves with outliers.
Very good point. And once again, let's take a look at the property values, and you'll see everybody is in on there, some higher, some lower, but there isn't, you know, no case could be made that we were substantially property poorer than they were.
I might suggest that we might want to identify what the mil equalizes in actual property tax. For example, 8.84 would be $884 per 100,000 value.
That's a very good point. One of the things that we also got as feedback is we would have people who would ask us, what is a mil rate? You know, because they really, they know what their property taxes are, but they really don't know what that number meant. And it is just the number that you would multiply by the number of thousands of dollars of property that you have, so.
A mil is a thousandth of a cent.
So that sort of takes a look at, that's our 360-degree view of what revenue comes into the school district. The next piece we look at is what about the spending? Let's see if the spending matches up with that. Well, the first thing we looked at was administrative spending. And we use the Wisconsin Taxpayers Alliance School Facts Report that we use every year. And I would just give a shout-out to them that that data is incredibly valuable for us because it does allow us to have an independent source of information that we can take a look at each year, and it's been very valuable. If you look at us compared to other CSAs, this seemed to be a good way to put it up on a graph, because it allows us to take a snapshot of the entire state at once. What some people don't know is that the state of Wisconsin is divided up into 12 different CSAs or zones, and each one of those CSAs has anywhere from 25 or so to 45 school districts. You'll see that on this graph, Oshkosh is the blue on the far left. We are the lowest spending. And you'll see the red bar there, right next to it, is CSA 6. That is our CSA. They are the lowest-spending CSA. And do you know why they're the lowest-spending CSA?
Because we're in it.
Because we're in it. If we get drafted into, let's say, CSA 7 next door, they will become the lowest spending. So if CSA 7 is listening, and they'd like to draft us in, low revenue, we can make a case for that. But that is the administrative spending chart. We also broke-
Excuse me, I have a question on that.
Sure.
Is that roughly $600 for Oshkosh? Is that per student, or what is that?
Yes, that is a per pupil expenditure.
Okay, thank you.
Good point. And you'll see that on the next graph, you'll see we are the fourth bar in at $624 per student is what Oshkosh spends on administration. Now, in 2010, we were 426th out of 426. We're now 423rd out of 426. But that means that there are 423 bars going to the right on this chart that we haven't even put on the graph. In other words, 99.3% of school districts spend more on administration than we do. So that's the administrative spending side. We then took a look at the teacher salary data, because we're obviously the two largest groups of employees in regards to those costs. And if you look at teacher salary data, you'll see that Oshkosh ranks 42nd out of 75 in northeast Wisconsin. Once again, we had to take a snapshot of those districts that we would potentially lose employees to, or we have to at least be aware of to be market-competitive in our rates. That means we're behind districts like Green Bay, Kekana, Appleton, Fondleec, North Fondleec, Nina Minasha, Little Shoot, Hortonville, Kimberly, Winnicottany, and 30 others.
If you included the ISTs in that number, not that one, the previous number, what would that do to our ranking?
You mean the administrative numbers?
Yes.
Well, that's an interesting point. I really don't know where that would move us as far as the ranking, but we do include some positions that other districts don't typically include as administration. Two examples would be our technology services manager, our network engineer, and our database developer. Those are considered administrators in Oshkosh.
Plus, three leadership personnel in the recreation department-
Right.
-are included in that. And if we would include the ISTs, we'd have to find a way to include the ISTs in all other districts, because those kind of positions, teachers on special assignments, exist all across the state, and they're not licensed administrators.
How many of our neighbors have ISTs?
Well, they have teacher, maybe not that title, but they have teachers on special assignments.
Well, I think most of them have some variant of it.
Most like-sized districts do, especially when you get this size-
Right.
-they will have them. Very small districts rarely do, but this size or in our like-sized districts, they almost always do, both in the curricular area and in the special education area.
And then the last piece of this is taking a look at our performance, and we've performed very, very well. We exceed the state average in almost every grade and measure in reading, math, science, and social studies. We also found the longer students are in the Oshkosh Area School District, the better they do, which is very heartening for us to know that. So we then talk about you. We talk about the fact that, given that information, that we take in low revenue, we're low spending, we're high-performing, the school board, you, decided to act and authorize us to go to referendum. And that referendum will exceed the revenue cap by $3.95 million a year for seven years. We then show them how it's broken down, and this is where we often have the discussion about the dichotomy between the two pieces. And it's sometimes been hard for people to say, wait a minute, that blue part, the $2.5 million, is to avoid a bad thing. The green part, the $1.45 million, is to increase student access and staff access to technology, which is arguably a good thing. How can you do both at the same time? And the answer really is, we do need to do both, because both of those, and I would say the people who spoke earlier said it far more eloquently than I can. And we will talk a little bit about some of the reasons that the access to technology was approved by you, as well as part of our technology plan, part of our strategic plan. We then talk a little bit about retaining the educational opportunities, and we do explain to them the process that Stan had initiated when he came here of having a community group vet the reductions and provide you, school board members, with their recommendations. We talk a lot about the hard work they did, and the fact they met for several nights, and it was a very thankless task, but one they worked very hard on. These are the board-approved budget reduction list. The first one is require all middle school students to take one study hall. That would save approximately $964,000, would result in roughly 16 teacher reductions, even with a plus-four para increase. Number two, allow high school students to take six credits per year. Having had a son who graduated from West a few years ago, I know he routinely took seven credits per year, and that was, you know, had a difficult time fitting all the courses in, even with that on occasion. So that would certainly impact our students, and that would result in a savings of about $490,000 due to a seven teacher FTE reduction. The third one is K5 art, music, and FIAD classes would be reduced by half. That would be roughly a half million dollars. Once again, approximately seven teacher FTE reduction. The fourth one is to cut the high school athletic budget by $89,600. Where did that number come from? Well, actually, the community group, when we were near the end of the deliberations, felt very strongly that they needed an athletic component to that, and the percentage that they came up with was 10%, and that is the $89,600. The doubling of high school athletic participation fee and the co-opting of the various sports listed below, boys' swimming, softball, football, boys' and girls' golf, boys' and girls' soccer, boys' and girls' cross-country, would result in a savings of those dollars.
Excuse me, that wasn't what the board voted on for number four. I have that resolution in front of me from February 26th. We did not vote on combining those specific sports. I recall that was in an addendum that we got, I believe, the day of the board meeting as a suggestion, but that was, those were not specifically voted on, nor were the participation fees voted on on February 26th.
Correct. The board voted to do the 10% cut.
Correct.
The board left the work, I should say, up to administration as to exactly what that would entail.
And I believe the rationale behind these was how to protect access to the sports without eliminating a specific sport out of the program.
Right, and compliance with Title IX, to make sure that we dealt with boys' and girls' sports on a co-equal basis, and that was part in. And the direction from previous years that athletics directors had was not to eliminate any one activity that students who have worked through progression through their elementary and into secondary school would have the opportunity so that no sport is eliminated.
The next page, we would close one of five middle schools, which would be a savings of $350,000. You can see there that would result in minus one administrative FTE, minus one dean FTE, minus two clerical FTE, and minus 1.5 custodial. That's where those dollar amounts came from. Number six was increase high school music teaching load from four to five sections. That's projected to save $84,000 or 1.2 teacher FTE. Number seven, eliminate subsidy for free reduced cap. That's a projected cost of $30,000. Number eight, eliminate $100 per teacher professional development funding. That budget line item is $12,000. Number nine, eliminate music teachers stipend for holiday concerts at all 21 schools. The number there was $5,000. And number 10, double the deductible on all employee health insurance. The number there was $107,044. One of the questions we've gotten several times is, so which one of those would you have to do? And we said all. So then that usually, people realize the depth of what $2.5 million is. We then have to create a hard break, because usually that leaves people concerned, understandably so. And we say, so that is part of, the most significant part of the referendum is that piece right there, is eliminating those reductions from the equation. The next thing we talk about is our technology plan, which is based off the strategic plan. And we talk about the rationale behind this was the direction to provide consistency in access to technology for our students. And that equity of access component was strategic plan goal 4A. So we came up with a plan to do that, and the overall objective is to provide a rigorous and relevant and connected personalized learning system, preparing students for the world they will graduate into. That world is going to be increasingly connected and increasingly technology and information-rich. The other thing that's important to understand that is different from when many of us went to school is our only source of information was printed works or our teachers. Now, most of the raw information can be had, you know, with a pocket-sized piece of technology at your fingertips. So the game changes a little bit. You know, we're still teaching reading, math, science, and social studies, but it's more so in what context we're teaching that and establishing an educational environment that supports that. So here's what those dollars would be used to. Number one is improving access to technology, and that puts in modern classroom technology. Right now, many of our classrooms have little-to-no technology in them. Some of them don't have projectors. Most of them don't have any kind of smartboard or interactive capability to what they have, and very little access to the outside world. This would resolve that. The next thing is a sustainable, effective, and cost-effective network, including high-bandwidth Wi-Fi. That's going to be critical for any kind of an initiative that we have. It has to be wireless. It can't be something with expensive wiring to it. Next one is servers and storage to meet the needs of over 12,000 users. I don't think most people know that we're probably one of the largest computer systems in the region. We have 21 physical sites and 12,000 users, which is bigger than most companies. Improved access regarding phones, phones connecting every classroom. We're fortunate enough to have those in right now, and we've connected them to our single-wire emergency notification system. It was somewhat shocking when I got here in 2010 that we did not have phones in every classroom, especially in this day and age. I sleep much better now, knowing that there is access in every room, and it is connected to an emergency system. Whenever we get a 911 call, you know, Stan and I are notified, as well as the rest of the central team, and we can marshal the support necessary. Those phones have been in place, and that is really a positive story, because that one actually has a positive return on investment. We're saving $100,000 a year putting that in, and it will pay for itself in just under three years.
And the security that you're hoping for from this is above what we would get with current phones that we have for the district, the mobile phones that we have for the district that are distributed?
Well, the mobile phones, are you talking like cellular phones?
Yes.
Yeah, cell phones are fine, but they're not really everywhere, and this means you have a device. Plus, those cell phones can't necessarily hit a one-button panic button and send out an emergency notification or a call for help.
But I guess that's what I'm getting at, is I've had numerous people tell me, well-
Everybody has a cellphone.
Well, this is archaic and ridiculous, and why are we doing this? And we're doing it for security reasons.
Absolutely. You know, having a hard-line phone may not be like what I have at home anymore. You know, you may have gotten rid of your hard-line phone, but in this cases, these devices function far more than just a telephone. They are network access points. We can plug computers into them. We often do, so there's one drop necessary for both devices. They have cameras on them, and you can listen in on them. So that means if there is something that, you know, God forbid, happened in one of our classrooms, we'd have the capability of listening in, which is really important in a crisis.
And also video connection-
Yes.
...for individuals. And we cannot rely on teachers with their personal cell phones to be the emergency connection, because they're not that worked.
Well, and also, some cell phones in some of our buildings don't work. You know, some of our buildings are, and it doesn't seem to be necessarily how old the building is. It seems to be more what's on the walls, of whether or not it's going to prevent a cell signal from hitting. In this way, we don't have to worry about that. The next piece, which is last but certainly not least, is personal access to technology for staff and students so that they can participate in connected learning activities. This is akin to giving a student a digital backpack, and you're giving each student an OnRamp into the world of information. That includes connecting them elsewhere. One of the things that we just had in ALPS that we posted on our Facebook pages, we actually had our ALPS class having a conversation with the embassy staff in Abu Dhabi in real time. And what was really fascinating about that was, A, the kids ask fantastic questions, and they're totally engaged. But what was really interesting is I was in a, I was at a conference at the time, watching them do this while the keynote was going on. I was also paying attention to the keynote, but it was interesting watching our students do this from a different place while they were having a conversation with somebody on the other side of the world. And those are increasingly opportunities that we want to be able to provide to students, and we can do so at far less cost than we ever thought possible. So then we move into some frequently asked questions. The first one was about, when are we going to see this? What is the rollout schedule? How's it going to look? And we've taken great pains to stagger the implementation, because the 1.45 million is not enough to do everything all at one time. People have said, well, wait a minute, if I add all this up, it turns out to be a lot more money, and that's true. If you look at our rollout plan and our technology plan, you'll see we had to break it out into different pieces each year, and it doesn't cycle through for, in some cases, seven years. It depends on the piece of technology, and that's how businesses do it. What they do is they buy a piece of technology, they know how long that technology will last, and then they depreciate it, and they budget for it. Now, we don't get the tax savings of depreciating, but we certainly should be budgeting for it. We shouldn't just put it in and then say, well, when it fails, we'll think about it then. We do it a little bit all the way along. So the first thing that we would be doing is providing teachers with access to that technology next year. The next thing we would do is start rolling it out at the high school, followed by middle, followed by grades three through five. And then we would cycle that process all over again until we reach the end of the referendum, which would be the 2021 school year. So we have a detailed seven-year budget plan on the schedule of how this is going to be rolled out, where it's going to be rolled out, and what it's going to look like. The next one was, what will we do if equipment is lost or broken? These are the similar slides that I shared with you in some of the frequently asked questions that the board posed. The truth of the matter is, we've had very little breakage, and most districts that have gone to one-to-one have experienced very little breakage. If you look at our specific data, you'll see that we have 620 Chromebooks that have been in place for several years. We've damaged four and lost one, so that gives us an annual loss rate of .27%. The iPads that we've put out, which largely were grant-funded, we have a little over 2,000 of those out in the district. Staff damage six, student damage 11, and we lost three, which puts us at still a loss rate of .3%. And lastly, special ed iPads, we had a fleet of 177. We had damaged six, lost one, and that is an annual rate of 1.3%. So any one of those rates is certainly acceptable and well within reason, and we were pleased to see that the data came in that way. It should also be noted that there are several very attractive insurance options that will be available. One of them was approximately $56 for a four-year term. That isn't $56 a year. That's $56 in total, spread across four years, and that would insure devices as well. So that's a very competitive rate. What does the research say? Well, we presented that to you in the past, but we- Well, we presented that to you in the past, but we, and this is one of those things where the board questions really led to some slides that answered a lot of questions the community had. We see positive effects on student achievement in the areas of literacy, science, exam scores, GPAs, and writing scores. And as I said before, writing scores were the one that the research shows gain the most with technology. And the longer they spend with it, the higher the achievement gains, which is very gratifying. The other thing that we talked about is, that isn't the sole reason. In fact, that's not even the major reason that we would be putting this in. The major reason would be creating a relevant education system to where the learning activities begin to mirror the types of activities our students are going to be required to compete in once they leave us. The other thing that you've, the districts that did this found is that student engagement and motivation increased drastically. Behavior issues drop like a stone. And the reason for that was because the motivation engagement increased. If you go to any classroom where kids are motivated and engaged, you will not see behavior issues. It's rare that you will. Mr. Dido, do you have a question?
Yeah, it's the same question I keep bringing up. I've read that stuff as well, Dr. Goodlock, the information about, and especially the longevity, that literacy goes up, spelling goes up, writing goes up, reading comprehension, everything goes up. The longer that you use the technology, behavioral issues disappear, the longer that you use the technology. And once again, my question is, why are we starting in high school? Where it seems to me if we rolled out the computers first to the lowest level, then the middle, then the high, you would essentially get that longevity in a more immediate format.
It's a good point. It's certainly a fair point. And the first thing is, I think some people might ask, why is it that it continues to increase longer with how long you use it? You have to understand, this is a major retooling of the public education system that has remained largely unchanged for 100 years. If you really look at the learning activities and what we've done, we haven't changed them a ton in all that span of time. This is a change that's going to take time to train people up and to get them to use it, and that's why the districts that have done it continue, just like we will. We'll continue to solve problems that we may not even know exist yet all the way along, and we'll get better with it. So it makes a lot of sense. But getting to your question, why start at the top end? Part of it, the community felt very strong about this, as well as our district tech team, is that we didn't want to graduate students who didn't have a benefit of using this technology, even if it was for a year or two. And we knew the young students were coming up, and so, starting at the top and working our way down, A, allowed us to start with the most mature students first. And arguably, it's going to be, the easiest issues we're going to have will be at the high school. So it's sort of, let's go ahead and walk before we run on this one. So as we moved down into the middle school, we're probably going to get a whole different set of issues with it. And then when we go to the elementary school, it'll be another issue once again. So it will allow us to figure out different things and solve problems in a measured fashion so that we can be sure that we don't, the last thing we want to do is waste any of the dollars that we're fortunate enough to have. So if we, we felt this was a nice measured approach. Start with staff, that was no question about that. But then move into the high school next because they're the most mature, they're also the ones who are going to be exiting us the soonest. So, okay. Lastly, you know, I won't go through all these 21st century competencies, but I will go through one of them because it does seem to be indicative of the world that we are all increasingly facing, you know, managing, analyzing, and synthesizing multiple streams of simultaneous information. It is no longer a question of, can I get the information? The information is basically shooting at us at ever-increasing speeds. The question is, can you swim in that current? Or are you just going to be swept away by it? And we need to teach our students how to be able to live in that world, how to be able to thrive in that world, and it's important to give them an opportunity to do that. What are other districts doing? Well, according to surveys, at least 37 other districts have already reported resourcing one-to-one access currently or several years ago. Several districts have done that. All of them are pretty much surrounding us. And I think you'll see an incredible spike up in the number of districts that are doing this because we are not the only ones who are going to referendum or who have gone to referendum. Appleton was the most notable one, but I had a conversation just today with Onalaska School District. They did the same thing. They've gone to one-to-one, and there's several other referendums that will be hitting in April 1st for the same thing. So you're going to see this more of a common than an uncommon situation. The next one was, what factors impact school revenue? We talk a lot about enrollment, and we talk a lot up here about the importance of enrollment data and us being a destination district that families want to locate in. That's good for our community, it's good for our businesses. And the flip side of this is, we could very quickly slip down the slope of being at a negative in terms of open enrollment. Right now, we net lose 132 students to open enrollment. We are now gathering, or we're preparing us to survey those folks to get accurate scientific data as to exactly why that is. We feel that's going to be some real important information. But the fact of the matter is, we package up a little over $875,000 with these kids, and we ship that off to other school districts. So it's very important. If we did gain students back, that would have a positive effect on our revenue picture. And we do tend to show Racine School District because they are one of the ones that lose the most open enrollment, and they were not unlike us in '02, '03. They had a net loss of about 121 students. They are currently at 1,044. On the flip side is the other side of that coin, which is Appleton School District. They gain over 1,000 students, and that means they gain somewhere in the $8 to $9 million of revenue each year. So it's a big swing, and parents and families have never had more choices than they do today. So we're in a competitive market space, and we need to be able to compete in that space. So in recap, if the referendum is approved by the voters, we'll be able to protect the academic programs that you saw listed there previously. We'll be able to increase access to technology for teaching and learning if it's approved. If it's not approved, two and a half million more in cuts affecting learning opportunities will have to occur. The other thing is, the access to our students will probably decrease, not stay level. Because remember, most of that technology that we have was grant-funded. They give you grants to start projects, they never give you grants to sustain projects. So that's very important for us to understand is that our grant-funded tech will eventually age out. If we don't have a plan to replace it, we'll be without it. So the tax impact, so what does this mean to us as taxpayers? Well, the tax impact on that 3.95 million is 0.56 mils, which has a tax impact of $56 per year on a $100,000 home, or $4.67 a month, however you want to take a look at it. And the last slide usually is one that Stan talks quite a bit about. You know, talks a lot about us becoming an outlier district if this does not occur. I can guarantee you, the cuts that we currently have on the list are not being considered by other school districts. If those services do go away, we will become an outlier. If we do not increase or at least keep up with our student and staff access to technology, we will have no hopes of being able to change our learning activities because there will be no point in doing it. Another district contacted me today asking about, what are we doing with our technology standards and which ones are we using? Well, we're using the ISTI standards, which is what the vast majority of school districts are using. And they asked, what is your plan for incorporating them into your curriculum? And we have a pretty detailed plan that you've all seen. They said, well, what happens with a no vote? I said, well, really, that makes that very, very difficult because the students simply won't have enough access to technology to be able to accomplish many of those standards. They'll be very limited in that regard. We do think that, you know, failure of the revenue cap may result in significant decreases in residential property values if parents choose or families choose not to locate here. That would be a negative for our community. Diminished revenue for retail and professional services. People tend to shop where they live, and that would have an impact on our business community. In the long run, the reduced population of the school district may diminish the ability of municipalities to generate revenue to support existing and future services as well. So those are just some potential implications. And then we put out there, you know, we've taken many calls on our referendum hotline. We've answered several of them. We do tend to get quite a few emails, but our website has been the most popular. We've had near, I think, 48 questions submitted, many of them multi-part questions through our website, which is great. So we've had a lot of people contact us for information, and they've been very appreciative, and we enjoy being able to do that, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
I know most of you know all this, so.
Oh, sorry, pardon.
I don't have a question, it's more of a comment. Occasionally, people will say, this has been a high-performing district, so what's the problem? And in reflecting on that, I think I had kind of the lightbulb moment tonight, and that was, when you look at those lists of potential cuts that we would be facing after April 1st, and you combine those with the list that was approved a year ago, and you put those all together, that's the problem. Because the district has been successful because of the things that are on those two lists. You take those away, and the performance isn't going to be there. Now, that's not, that maybe is an oversimplified approach to that because it's those things on the list, plus it's the performance of individual teachers. We know we've got an excellent teaching staff, we've got a strong administrative team, we have very dedicated paraprofessionals and secretaries. So it's not only the things on that list, but certainly those that contribute to student learning contribute to the strong performance of our students over time.
Well, and I would say that, you know, what I've learned in my four years working here is that previous administrations and teachers did an amazing job of shielding the students from as many of those as possible, and we've run out of shield. And that's where we're at today. We did have that very question. We've had people say, look, you're low-spending, high-performing, what's the problem? And we said, well, largely, that two and a half million is about maintaining exactly what that is. You know, it isn't saying, hey, we're going to fix all the revenue shortage issues. That's not what it's saying. It's saying that we're not going to let us become an outlier compared to others.
And I would just like to add to, there are several clarifications, and I think I have fielded between phone calls and personal discussions with lots of folks. A few themes that I just need to be a reminder of is, and in fact, I met with a gentleman this morning for about almost two hours, and he wanted to know about interest rates and how much we're spending in interest. And this is a new issue for the Oshkosh School District in the fact that since 1994, when the first really, after the two-year period that occurred, this passed just yesterday or day before, the Tax Payers Association that does all the study with tax did a wonderful preparation of a notice, and they talked about well over 900 referendums for override since 1994. That's when the first ones occurred, two years after the imposition or immediately a year after the imposition of the caps on revenue. And over 900 scattered across about 80% of Wisconsin school districts have had some form of referendum enhancement. And the reason why on those bar graphs that our numbers, our bar is the lowest is because all of our sister districts have had varying forms of referendum for learning, for operations over that period of time. Their expenditure per pupil is higher because they've had this referendum. Through the wisdom and the history of previous school boards and administration, for all of this 22-year period or 20-year period since 1994, this school district has never asked for additional revenue for instruction. This is the first time ever asked for dollars for learning. All previous bond issues or additional levy were tied to maintaining or building new facilities. The revenue, the $1.3 million that expires this year of annual funds for facilities, that was voted on some five years ago, six years ago. In most recent, in the 1990s, the dollars were voted on to build the Trager complex of both elementary and middle school. Bond issue, borrowing money paid back over 20-year period. At about the turn of this century, 1999, 2000, 2001, Jefferson was built. That was a bond issue for building. Six years ago was the passage of the referendum for facilities restoration and repairs that ran on for that period of time expiring this year. That was for facilities, not for learning. And then two years ago, this April, was the approval of a bond issue for building new facilities, that being Oaklawn Elementary School. All of those sometimes get confused in the fact that, no, we have never voted in this community in the history of this option being available and created by the legislature as a legitimate option to enhance education, never has a vote been brought forward to the community to put dollars directly back into maintaining educational programs. And if anything I've discovered through this informational effort for the last eight to 10 weeks is that the community does not always understand that we, there has never been a vote for this purpose before. This is the first time to save operational, educational programs for the district, not to maintain and care about facilities. And that is unique and different for the community to understand, but we have reached the edge of the ability to support the quality education programs. Lastly, I think, and I've had several former board members speak to me about this issue, some of whom have been in the audience, that they've really basically said these words that we have not thrown former school boards under the bus. Frankly, they focused in, in the past, on doing everything they could, as was stated earlier in the presentation, to preserve education for children by spending money in that direction as opposed to the maintenance of facilities. And lastly, I constantly hear from individuals saying, the district has wasted money. I have consciously gone through to look at audit reports that have been in the superintendent's files, going back through the early 1990s, and looked at annual budgets, and I have never found a place, because the district was always revenue short since 1992, it hasn't had any money to waste. And that's a misnomer that we need to overcome in the community because frankly, the previous boards and previous administrations have spent money wisely. They have spent them in the priorities at the time to really avoid the situation we now face. And that's really the issue of losing the strength, the quality that has been built up for all these years in the school district community.
The other thing we pointed out when we talk about all these other districts that have gone to referendum and Oshkosh has not, is the state aid pot is a sum sufficient set of, a sum certain pot of money. So if another district down the road passes a successful referendum and their expenditures go up, they get more state aid. Because it's one big pot, that means Oshkosh gets less state aid. And so in all those years when we were cutting budgets and reducing expenditures and other districts were gaining, they were getting more of the state aid pot than we were. And so then when our state aid goes down, our taxes go up, and so we end up indirectly funding all those other districts that have had successful referendums.
And that is certainly a major variable, and one of the issues that we've had frequent discussion on, the fact, and I think Sue, you might want to explain it because you could describe it probably better with the multiple-tiered state funding formula, that over progression of years, as our expenditures, if authorized by the voters, go up, we increase the opportunity for state aid as we get to a higher level.
Correct. So, you know, even though we've been saying this costs 56 cents, that's only in the first year, and then when we spend the additional 3.9 million, we'll get state aid on that in year two. So then actually, the 56 cents impact actually goes down. So, but we don't, you know, it's trying to hard to explain that without confusing to me.
And lastly, we mostly all read in Oshkosh Northwestern, day before yesterday, the governor signed a bill that includes a reduction in property taxes for the coming year, and that average reduction in property taxes actually is far in excess of what the base increase of what the community is, what we're asking the community to consider. So even with support for the referendum, we're in the position to, we will benefit from lower property taxes, even with a positive outcome. Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tonight's consent resolution agenda, for the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item. As discussed at a previous meeting, these will be acted upon with one vote, without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Does anyone have anything they wish to pull from tonight's agenda? No? All right, seeing none. The board will consider an approval of one, minutes of regular board
The board will consider an approval of, one, minutes of regular board meeting on February 26, 2014; two minutes of regular board meeting, executive session on February 26, 2014; three minutes of regular board meeting on March 12, 2014; four minutes of regular board meeting, executive session, March 12, 2014; five bills payable, six personnel, A, appointments, resignation, retirement, and salary schedule; five, final non-renewal of teacher contracts for teachers with temporary contracts; eight, renewal of two-year athletic cooperative agreements for gymnastics; nine, two-year athletic cooperative agreements for boys' swimming; 10, two-year athletic cooperative agreement for girls' hockey; 11, renewal of two-year athletic cooperative agreement for boys' hockey; 12, new policy, 889, school, family, business, and community partnerships; and 13, lease agreement between the Oshkosh Area School District and Winnebago County for the use of Winnebago County Community Park softball diamonds.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Weeden Hopps?
Aye.
Weeden Hopps, aye. Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Lumberger?
Aye.
Lumberger, aye. Segunet?
Aye.
Segunet, aye. Weeden Hopps?
All right, thank you. We therefore have no individually considered resolutions, and we'll go on to request for future agenda items. Is there anyone here this evening? Yes.
Yeah, I just was wondering if maybe not anytime soon, I know we've got a lot on our plate, but at some of, one of our upcoming meetings, would it be possible to have some kind of a workshop on our after-school programs that we currently have, you know, what they do, and just kind of run through it? Thank you.
You've got that one down? Anything else? No? All right. Announcements? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Just a quick announcement, just so there's no vagueness on this or anything. On voting that, like we just did for those two-year agreements with athletic groups, it should be pointed out that in the summary, that we've got to set up basically to blend Oshkosh West if we vote, if there's a no vote for the referendum.
Correct.
So I just wanted to make sure that people understood that. Well, it looks almost counterintuitive of what we had proposed here, that this is our, by agreeing to these two-year WIAA things, that we are, we have set ourselves up to follow through with what we're dealing with in our current budget situation.
Thank you.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Call the roll. Oh, sorry. Motion to adjourn to executive session for, number one, contemplated closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851F and G, for the purpose of considering, discussing, deliberating, and taking action as appropriate regarding a complaint for a parent or a student which may involve consideration of confidential pupil records as defined in Wisconsin State Statute 118.125, or medical personnel, or disciplinary history of the student, which, if discussed in public, would likely, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect on the reputation of the student, and for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning a strategy to help adopt, to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation on this complaint in which the district is or is likely to become involved. Number two, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under 19.851C Wisconsin State Statutes, A, discuss performance of individual licensed employee, and B, discussion of employee resignation.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Dito?
Aye.
Dito, aye. Eliasen?
Aye.
Eliasen, aye. Gardner?
Aye.
Gardner, aye. Weeden Hopps?
Aye. We are adjourned.[1469.58]